Call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, January 6, 2020, 6:30 PM. All members of the council are present. Others include James Johnson, I have Kirk Treasure, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The second item will be to approve the minutes of December 16, 23, and 30. We have a motion individually for each one.
You need to approve the minutes of December 16, 2019?
A motion has been made, is there a second?
No, second.
Seconded, discussion. All those in favor who approve the December 16 minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. The next one would be of December 23 minutes. That would entertain a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion been made, is there a second?
No, second.
Seconded.
Whoever you want.
Discussion, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. And the third would be to approve the December 30 minutes. Is motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. Johnson, you didn't give them to me to sign.
Huh?
If you so wish, we decide a minute.
I can do it.
The next item is comments by members of the public. We have, the first one is Lori Grim, and her topic is the ATV vote.
Mr. Mayor, Lori Grim, I live on Mountain View Drive in Newport City. I'd like to read a letter, I will have copies for the council, they shouldn't take additional notes. An open letter to Mayor Paul Manette, members of the Newport City Council, city manager Laura Dogan, city clerk Jim Johnson, Newport City Police Chief Seth DeSanto, and Scott Janess, president of the Borderline Ridge Riders ATV Club. On January 14, 2020, I will be voting yes to repeal the ATV ordinance due to a lack of consideration given for the safety and welfare of the community members and what I believe to be a lack of thoughtful planning for this process, possible influx of business. In some cases, a yes vote to repeal is a direct reaction to the threats, name-calling, and harassment many have experienced since the petition was approved and the vote scheduled. I've been accused publicly and privately of being anti-business, anti-Newport, and anti-ATV. None of these things are true. Despite the best efforts of some, I remain aware, active, and involved. It has been brought to my attention that Scott Janess attended a Newport Town Select Board meeting last week where he said on the record that the state has not given permission for ATVs to drive on the portion of Route 105 West, a state-maintained highway located in Newport Town. When directly asked that question at a Newport City Council meeting, Scott said that permission had already been granted. This was the same city council meeting where I brought the speed and traffic issue on this same highway to the attention of the city council, most of whom were unaware that this was part of the proposed route through Newport Town and as a state highway would require prior state approval to travel. This weekend, I spent time looking over the roadmap approved by the council and have several questions. Is the city prepared to handle an influx of ATVs by providing increased police presence, especially on Saturdays and Sundays, with patrols, deskable meters? Is there policing protocol in existence where ATVs share streets? In looking at the proposed new trailheads to be located at the Newport City Recycling Center on Comerchew Street and the Newport Department of Public Works on Union Street, I wonder what the plan is for overflow parking. My husband visited the recycle center on Saturday and reported that there would be no way extra vehicles would be able to park in that area, much less be left unattended for the day. The recycle center is also blocked, a locked area when not in use. What impact will this have on ATV parking as its trailhead? I've heard that city residents who own and operate ATVs are excited because they will be able to get on their ATVs at home and drive to the approved routes. Does the city have a plan in place to deal with those who knowingly or unknowingly drive on non-approved city streets to get to the approved routes? What about ATVs looking for parking on Central Street, Seymour Lane, Gardner Park, Field Avenue, Mountain View Drive at a city-owned water tower property, or any of the side streets connected to the approved route? Is the city planning to spend more money on wayfinding signs to direct ATVs to stay on the route, or will the Borderline Ridge Riders group be responsible for that? It is disappointing that more time and thought has not gone into such a major change to our downtown. I am publicly stating that my vote to repeal the ordinance is a request to the council to go back and look at the ordinance, consider the suggested route changes, take your time, and then vote. Had respect been given to the request for route changes and consideration of safety as requested at the public meetings regarding this ordinance, maybe city residents would have spent the last few months helping to work out these details instead of signing petitions or a public vote. I've been told in the past that city residents, Newport city residents, are not always privy to city business. Maybe you've already started working on a plan that answers these questions and others. If so, please share. If not, I hope that my questions here will spur you on to do so and be prepared regardless of the outcome of the vote. Being proactive is so much better than being reactive. Please make a plan that works for everyone. It should now be clear to you all that when you ignore community input from all sides, the community won't allow it without a fight. Instead of fighting, how about we all work together? Sincerely, Lori Grim.
Thank you.
The next item is Ann Shirley, MLK Day. MLK Day, yeah.
That's correct. That's Martin Luther King Day. And I learned, I wasn't here at one meeting, unfortunately, I was tam-raised the issue of not having a meeting on the 20th, and that's Martin Luther King Day, and you've had them several times before on Martin Luther King Day. And the mayor elucidated her, and I got enlightened. The reason that we don't take off that day is because the city of Newport has never declared Martin Luther King Day to be a holiday. And then I went back to the computer, and I looked, and it was made a federal holiday in 1986, and every state in the Union, all 50 states, north, south, east, west, Alaska and Hawaii, by 1999, had made it a state holiday. And I looked, not everybody has a calendar of their holidays, but in Vermont, but these are some of the cities and towns that have Martin Luther King Day as a holiday and closed down the city, their city or town that day, Burlington, Rattleboro, Bennington, I'll probably forget a few that I saw, St. Albans, Barton, and there were innumerable other cities that have declared Martin Luther King Day to be a city holiday or a town holiday. And I don't want you, and what I'm asking for today is for you to declare in this city of Newport 34 years late and a dollar short for Martin Luther King Day to be a holiday here. You can't do it by the 20th and do it for next year, but I think you could even do it by the 20th. And it's not because everybody else has done it that I want you to do it. We've got one, two educators that I know of, another that worked in the school system, a health, a person who works in the health department, and you know how children look up to adults to show them the way, and they're picking up on nuances. And what nuance do we send them if we don't declare Martin Luther King Day to be a holiday in this town? And so that's one of the reasons I want you to do it. And the second reason that I want you to do it, and believe me, I'll come up with many more if it doesn't happen today, in the next weeks and months to come, but I want you to do it because, for me, Martin Luther King was a hero. I wish I could talk a hundredth as well as he could talk, and I wish I was as good a person, a thousandth as good a person as he was. But he was in a situation where a group of people, and it's not only one group of people that he was concerned about, but a group of people from the day they were declared free in 1865 to the day he started, were second-class citizens in America. And they didn't go to the same schools that everybody else went to down south, there were separate schools, and they couldn't go to the lunch counters, and they couldn't use the same bathrooms, the bathrooms said white only. And he changed that, and people came from all towns across America to go down and join him in the marches. And they were black people, but they were white people, and they were of every religion, and they came down to help him out because they knew that civil rights was an important thing. And as I say, I wish I could talk near as well as he could. And you might say, what are you doing talking about that? And I have to use Mayir, the Israeli premier who was, who was the premier of Israel for some time, and paraphrase her, when I say, well, if not me, then who? And if not now, when? So I asked you, I think you should be falling over each other to make the first, be the first one to make the motion to declare Martin Luther King Day a holiday in our city, and you should be falling over each other to be the second, and then you should be falling over each other to vote for it to be a holiday. And if you don't, I want to know why from each one of you that you wouldn't declare Martin Luther King Day to be a holiday in this city. And if you don't do it today, well, I hope some other people come out and join me on Martin Luther King Day to do it before you. And if you don't do it on that day, I'm doing it every time, and I'm going to give you every reason why this should be a holiday, so that people will know, the people that bully in the schools or bully anywhere.
Okay, okay, well, we know, we understand, we've heard the history, I know the history very well. Excuse me, I wasn't speaking to you.
She was asking, what are you going to do? So I ask you, what are each of you?
Well, okay, your time limit is up.
Okay, what are you going to do? I'm asking you a question.
We don't take action in public comment. We do not take action under public comment. That is the way it's been. If somebody wishes on the new business, they may, they may not. I, it's not, you know, it's up to the council to make the motion. I don't make motions.
Put it on the agenda for next time. Put it on the agenda for Martin Luther King Day.
The issue I see is we actually have two union contracts that we would have to, that's an issue there.
Well, you know, the feds handle it.
No, no, excuse me, excuse me, I said we have.
And they take and handle it.
Yeah, but we have two signed agreements that we can't just declare holidays now with those agreements.
Or I'm sure the union would hate for you to declare another holiday.
Well, enough, enough discussion, enough discussion, the conversation's over.
Okay, well, you'll get for me next time.
I just said, we don't take action under, we don't take action under public comments, and if someone at the council wants to do something later, it's up to them. That's what I was trying to explain to you, and you know that, you know darn well, we don't take any action under public comment.
It's fine, that's fine.
We take it under advisement, and if a council wishes to have something at the next meeting, they can request it from me, or, because I don't deny anything on the agenda, everything's been put on the agenda that people come to me.
I'm requesting it. I'm requesting it for next time.
Well, we'll have it on the next agenda, and we'll discuss it. But that's where it stands right now. The next public discussion is from Bob Courier, it's landscaping.
Our landscaping budget. Mr. Mayor, council members, and city manager, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing to prepare this budget. I know it's not an easy job, but, and there are people that aren't going to be happy, there are people that are going to be happy, but thank you so much for joining in. I have been a member of this community for 65 years. In the last two years, I have seen our city start to balloon, and it has been as beautiful as it's ever been in my 65 years. Years ago, about 30 years ago, I worked for an insurance company, and I don't know if anybody remembers this, but we used to, actually, our office took one of the medians, and we put flowers in for a couple of years, and of course, they got run over by trucks and stuff, but we did do that for a few years, and I was the star. Bob, you're doing an awesome job. I encourage that, as you do, to decide on your budget tonight, that you do keep that in there because the only way that Newport is going to grow is to make ourselves look good. I know we do look good, so that's it.
Hold any applause. Okay, the next item is the FY 2021 budget. We've had the budget since November, we've had, how many meetings now? Five?
Three.
Three. Well, three, yeah, that's right, three special meetings. And we have it on the agenda for a vote and decision tonight on the budget.
I'd like to accept the FY 2021 budget as it is presented.
There's been, there's been a motion made, is there a second?
No, second.
Seconded. Now it opens up for budget discussion. Anybody on the council? Yes.
I had made a request a few meetings ago about equity and salary, and I was told that it should only be discussed in executive session. However, I noticed there's not an executive session listed on tonight's agenda, therefore I can't, I can't support this budget without having that discussion.
I've, I came in, I had a number of questions. City manager was very good to me, she gave me a lot of information. Becky gave me information, the mayor, we had a long discussion. And for me, it's the 3% raise every year. It's like a runaway train, you know, over, and this didn't start with her administration, it started years ago, John Ward instituted that. And I think Kevin alluded to the fact that the CPI is only 2.4 this year. Well, they'll tell us, so what we're doing, we're telegraphing that information to our union representatives that everybody's going to get a 3% raise. And I don't think we should telegraph that for every year, it just doesn't make sense to me. And it's not 3% every year because it compounds on itself. So it's not 9% over three years, it's a significant portion more, and it just keeps building. Do I think our city held as fair wages for the area? I do. But I don't know of anyone, and somebody asked me, what did I get for a raise last year? And here's the side part, I have no idea, okay? Our union contract just came through, but I'm at the top of the scale. So we don't have steps anymore. You know, I, I used to get steps, but now I don't get steps anymore because of where I am on the scale. And like I've told everybody, it's not about the money. For me, I took 30% of what I was getting in Boston to take a position in Newport because I wanted to be here. So for me, it's a lifestyle. But I have to also look at, what about everybody else that lives in this city? I don't think you'll find too many people who get 3% raises every year. And I think, you know, and I don't care what the top guy gets or the bottom guy, for me, a reasonable wage is within the CPI. All right? So for right now, and I thought there was going to be another thing in my packages about wages, but I guess I didn't get it. I went into email, I didn't see it, I'm sorry. So right now, because of that, and I think if anybody was here last time, I had a little opposition to the landscaper, not so much having a landscaper, but it looks like we're trying to create a new department. And that kind of irritated me a little bit, there's three employees, right, even though two of them are part-time. Does it look wonderful? And I think it does, I've lived in this city just as long as Bob, and I've seen good and bad during the 90s, landworks, right? We put landworks, we did the streets, we did Main Street, we bricked it, we bricked crosswalks, we built the gateway. I worked on the initial bike path, which was neglected by the administration, it's just a letter cost Martin Fisher late, not in a timely manner. Martin and I spent time talking to people in Montpelier. Norbert Blay did a design, him and I went to Montpelier several times. I've always had an interest in building a better city, and I think anybody that knows me knows I've done that. So for me, right now, tonight, I'm going to vote no, and I, I hope people are listening.
Since one person's on an executive session, there's nothing says that we can't have an executive session to discuss wages, because it's going to involve personnel. You want to have everyone leave the room and have an executive session to discuss wages?
Can I just make a comment first?
Yep, but that's something that we have an option, we can decide to have a motion and go into an executive session, because we don't discuss individuals publicly. Something that's for an executive session.
Yeah, I just, when I think about the administrative, you know, the department heads, administrative individuals, you know, the compensation to that, you know, we're compensating for their professional knowledge, for the professionals in their field, but the level of autonomous decision-making, that's part of where somebody becomes a salient person or a non-salient person, we're looking at the actual, that part of their positions is to be supervision of other employees, and there is, you know, a piece of longevity in there, but the skill and knowledge level is at the top of the rung for our municipal government. And I think that's something that is important, it's standard in any type of industry, you know, although, you know, government's not industry, but it's, people are compensated for their professional experience, their professional knowledge, their autonomous ability for decision-making, and for longevity. Those are important things. Part of the discussion that we heard from last meeting, and even a touch tonight, is that it's more an ideological basis for the decision of not giving the 3%. It's sort of that progressive move to redistribution of money, redistribution of wealth. And I hardly think that our city employees, and, you know, who are we talking about? We're talking about the director of Public Works, we're talking about, you know, the Public Works, the police department, the fire department, those individuals, why are we singling them out? I don't think that's an appropriate thing to do, to harp on them and take away for the money that I feel personally, others disagree with me, that they've earned and they deserve in their professional capacity in serving this city. The total amount of funds that you're talking about is $6,500. $6,500, you think we're talking about?
That's the 3%, that's all we're talking about, is $6,500 in the budget.
And there's still the other issue of an individual.
Well, we need an executive session if we're going to be discussing any of the department heads, any employee particular, any specific employee and their wages and their work they're doing, and the individuals need to be in the room present. So do we want an executive session? The council wants one? I can't make a motion, I'm leaving it up to the council if they want to discuss employees and wages, we're not going to do that in open session, it's not fair to the employee.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss, oh, what's the term for that? Personnel.
I'll second.
So a motion has been made and seconded to go in executive session for personnel. Any discussion on that motion? Then all those in favor, do we get to sit in on?
Yes, should be.
The executive session?
Should be.
I'd like to speak about one individual, that's my main concern.
If you're arguing my wage, I'd like a moment of the council's time.
I think it's only fair to the department heads.
Yeah.
That they, they join in the executive session discussing their wages and anything related to the department head, and so, yes.
And I would also have Becky stand in here because she has critical knowledge about this spreadsheet.
Okay, so we do have a motion and second.
So you just went from one individual salary increase, Mr. Mayor, to discussing all the salary increases for all department heads, and that's a public discussion? So, I mean, one question as an individual.
Well, we can have, we can have four, we can have five different executive sessions if that's what you wish, because...
That's what it has to be, I mean, you can't have a public discussion.
I know, we'll have five executive sessions then. We'll do it that way. If that's, we want to be technical about it, we just will not discuss individuals publicly. That's, I will not allow that. That's not fair to the employee, it's not fair to the council. So we need to have the first executive session, and there was the personnel. We haven't even voted on it, but I let people, well, we have...
I was going to mention that.
No, I know we haven't voted on it, I know we haven't, I didn't, normally I have, normally we have the vote before I let people.
I interrupted and I was a little distracted.
No, that's okay, I'm trying to talk. All right, so we do have a motion and a second, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
How many ayes?
Two.
Two? And two noes? Gee.
I'm just not on.
Don't you have to dispose of the previous motion?
No, the motion was for the executive session.
No, but one where to approve the budget.
Oh, you're right. You could withdraw those, thank you. So we, let's go backwards here, we need to withdraw the motions on the budget for now. Doing this correctly, Mr. Johnson?
So whoever seconded has to withdraw their second, and then I can withdraw the motion.
Okay. And then you're withdrawing yours?
I'm thinking about it.
Oh, okay, no, I'm just, just going to make sure we do this formally.
Oh, withdrawn.
Okay, so that's been withdrawn. Now we have the two to two on the executive session. Now we have the two to two on the executive session. Sorry I'm taking so long. I'm working something, working something out. I'm working something out in my mind. Well, I'm gonna vote no. We're gonna be back to the original. The only reason I did that is because of what the manager said. So I was working on numbers in my head. That 3% is only $6,500 as far as the admin goes in the budget. That's the main reason for that is... And the, and no department head had come and requested an executive session for personnel. That's another thing. Because normally during the budget process, it's opened up to the department heads, and if they want to bring up a personnel matter, which also includes if they're not happy with the budgeted amount for their wage, then they usually request an executive session. That's happened, that happened a couple of years ago. And so the council considered that. And that's another reason why I voted the way I did and took my time to think about it. So now I'm gonna need, we're back to the budget.
Back to the budget.
Do it formally.
Are you, Jaco, the presented NY 2021 budget?
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded? More discussion on the budget. Then, yes.
I just wanted to point out, I've been at all the budget hearings. A few of us have been, as well as you. And I wanted to point out in the time of John Ward, which may have been before some of your times, but not all of your times, by the time the budget that he presented at the beginning was discussed, everybody would look at it and say, hey, you know, could you, let's cut a little here and a little there and a little there. By the time we were done, we were just a little bit saner about how big the budget would be. And since then, one year, we went up about $900,000 on the budget from about $3,001,000 to maybe $3,900,000. And this time around, well, there have been a couple of the council people that have pointed out areas where they thought it could be lowered. In the end, the budget that was presented to begin with is the budget that you guys have passed. And I expect as a citizen of Newport that you, as the city council, would have made some impact on the total cost of that budget. Not even $5, as I recall, other than there was a mathematical mistake that Dan pointed out and I'm sure was corrected. But there's gotta be a place where it could be cut a little bit so that people who are on fixed incomes and aren't getting 3% increases in their social security possibly, or haven't gotten it for the last three or four years, will be able to make it in this city and heat their houses and have their rents paid and feed their children. So just think about, nowhere did you cut the budget.
So I would say that, yes, we have spent a lot of time. A lot of work goes on behind the scenes putting into the budget. Ask any single department head how much time they put into developing a budget, how much time Becky puts in, how much time Laura puts in, how much time Jim, you know, working and what are you disagreeing with already?
Oh, no, no, I'm not disagreeing that they spent a lot of time. But I can't believe they didn't spend time in the time of John Ward as well.
And so since Mr. Ward's departure, there's been a lot of catch-up in the city. There's been a lot of catch-up in infrastructure, in roads, in systems, everything here. Because things were neglected. The goal of those years was basically zero increases. And so as a consequence, if you don't take care of things, things fall apart. And so city has been working at improving and making it so you can drive down the roads without going into potholes, making sure the city works. And I feel that it's a greater service to the citizens of this town to have a city that's operational, that has a city that you can drive down the street on and not fall into a pothole, to have, you know, the systems work rather than save on taxes. Don't raise taxes, let everything fall apart. They know everybody complains because it's falling apart, but they don't want their taxes raised. That was the mentality. And as, you know, again, I, you know, as a person, at the time you and I ran, people felt that that's what they wanted. And so that's what I try to serve, to serve that we keep our city running and functional.
The expense budget for the entire city wasn't even up 1%, correct, Laura? Want to go to the recap?
Here's the recap page on here.
Not the recap, I mean, the overall expenses, if you go to the bottom line expense increase, I thought I saw that it was only up 0.3%. Am I correct?
Are you looking at this, or are you looking?
I was looking at the bottom line of all expenses.
I think you should go on the other page at the very bottom. The other page, General Lederer? Yeah. Now, the other expense page.
That has the total for the entire budget. And then you scroll way down. That's what I'm looking for. Point, so the overall expense side is only up, not even $22,000. It's only up $17,000 on the expense side. The reason? That is only up that much. It's the revenue side that's down some. But if we want to maintain our infrastructure and things like that, we have to have, this budget, I think, is a very lean budget. And then if you go back to the recap page, the grand list is a conservative grand list. It's the current grand list of $319 million. And that actually has grown, but you can't put it in there because it's not formalized until April 1st. So that's a conservative. In years past on the budget, I can tell this for a fact, under the previous administration, a lot of the grand list numbers were estimated. It wasn't actuals. We actually use the actual grand list versus in the past where it used to be an estimate. Well, we think the grand list is going to be this big, so this is what we think the tax rate will be. This is using the actual current one as the number, which is much more reflective of the current... Okay, there's something else I was gonna... Go ahead, Dan, I lost my train of thought. There was something else. I was gonna bring something else up.
Okay. So everybody's focusing on salaries of department heads, not union personnel. For me, I'm looking at everything. If we telegraph 3% to all our upper employees, and when we go into negotiations with one of the unions, and I've seen everybody getting 3%, they're gonna think 3%. Now, the difference is when you negotiate with the union, you cover everything. You know, you cover their benefit packages and everything. For the non-union people, it's just a raise. We never look at their benefit package. And one of the other things, when they say 0.03%, the clerk and treasurer transferred about $30,000 of his budget into the water and sewer. I still have to pay that. Somebody has to pay that. Water and sewers are taxed also. All right? So one of the things I asked, and Tom was very generous with me. He showed me how he breaks his money down and how he shifts and stuff, and it was all reasonable amounts. And he checks it at the end of the year. But cost shifting to another place is not saving people money. It's just hiding the fact that your budget's gonna go down, but it's gonna go over there and be in that budget.
I would say...
I disagree, I completely disagree. It's truly reflecting the expense. Let me finish, please, Mr. Ross. Let me finish, okay? Let me finish. I didn't interrupt you. Let me finish. It's truly reflecting what his time is spent in his office. And the utility bill, yes, you can consider it a tax. But think about the water and sewer. You've got big users in this community that don't pay taxes, but they're paying their full board water and sewer. The schools, the hospital, the prison. They don't pay taxes, but they pay their full. So it's not as much of an increase to the rate pair. It's probably very minimal. You probably won't, you know, very minimal in your, in your actual bill. You know, so it's not even, I'm not sure what it would equate to. But the utilities are paid by entities that don't pay taxes. That, yes, we all get, us, you remember, 25% of the grand list is non-taxable. So if his time, $30,000 worth, or whatever it is, is actually, should be in the water and sewer, I think that's good because you're getting more of the non-taxable people who are using that, helping to pick up that cost. You know, and that's how I look at it. You say it's cost shifting? Well, probably is, but it's truly reflecting the time in his department. Years ago, that never happened in this city. We didn't know what the true cost of every department was. Tom has to allocate five different ways sometimes, depending on what he's doing in his department, you know, to keep track of it. But you're getting the true cost of every department, and that's the way I look at it.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I may be mistaken, but wasn't the primary cause of the increased health insurance of the, then at the department's level funded with the healthcare, since we have no control of that, went up?
That went up 12%? Am I correct, 12%?
Even though the department's level funded and they're taking a hit in a lot of things, we can't control healthcare costs.
That's exactly what your budget reflects. And if you recall, we took the three-year average and put a number in there for all the expenses that we could control. For the expenses we could not control, those are health insurance and our HR costs. So your budget is up as little as possible that we could still have the city function. And I would remind folks that as the delinquent tax collector, I have firsthand experience with what people go through trying to pay their taxes. This budget is put together with the utmost respect to everybody who pays taxes on every edge of the spectrum that we work with. This is the best that we could do. And that's one of the reasons why there wasn't much to cut, because we presented a budget that was very conservative at the starting date. We knew in advance we didn't want to come in with anything that was, would be perceived as extravagant. That's not our philosophy. We want this to be as realistic and conservative as possible. As the mayor says, the grand list has a good chance of increasing. And if the grand list increases, the difference between what your current rate is and what your rate, when it will be set in August, will be a little bit less. We're aiming very conservative so that the taxpayer is not surprised. Best case scenario is that it'll be a little less than what we've projected, but we don't want it to be so much more that people are more disenchanted. We know that setting the tax rate is no fun. We also know that you've got an education tax and you've got appropriations coming. So we've presented numbers that are respectful to the entire process and to every taxpayer, including our people who are on our delinquent taxpayer list.
Just an example, just, you know, if you look up, I can, I'll see it. Last year's tax rate, without the growth of the grand list, would have been the dollar 24. But it actually got set at 123 because the grand list actually came in higher this current year. And so that's something that, depending on what it does, the current number could change, as the manager said. But I just want to point out, because it was right up there on the screen.
I just wanted to say, some of our department heads have earned their salary through grants. Some of them have brought a tremendous amount of money into the city that the city could use. And I, you know, I appreciate that, you know, as a, as a member. But I want you also to understand it's not about the department heads. It's about the overall for the city. Not only the heads, but the union people. Everybody has to be looked at and what their salaries are.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I understand what Dan's saying, but I don't think you can look at the salaries in the union because their salary's gonna be whatever they negotiate. Non-union don't have that option. I'd also like to say that the water and sewer are not taxes. Their enterprise comes as a fee for usage. Paul is correct. All these big places, tax-exempt places that don't pay proper tax, they pay water and sewer. So it's spread out far beyond the taxpayer. And the other thing is, I don't think Rob's here yet. I think he expects that grand list to go up. I think Rob expects it to go up at least a million dollars, maybe more. The last time I talked with him. So that tax rate, if it does, will be less than what's shown on the board. And I think, I don't have my budget there, but I think most department heads are either level funded or less than what they were the year before in the operational budgets. One, I think a one, it may have been up, but it wasn't up very, very, very much. So, and the reason I moved, cautious, as Dan likes to say, because I could save the city one penny on the tax rate in this scenario and put the cost of that where it should have been all along in water and sewer, because we bill four times a year for that. We collect those water bills every day of the year. We put up with the people who are late, have to charge them their interest rates, complain, listen to them, say, no, I'm sorry, it's the way it is. We spend a lot of time on water and sewer. We bill for taxes once versus four times for water and sewer. And I don't think 15% of what the wages are in the clerk's office charged in water and sewer is a terrible amount.
Okay, anything else?
All right. I'd just like to ask, the $6,500 that was thrown out, was that 3% or was that the differential between 3% and the cost of living? That number was thrown out. I just want to know what that number deals with.
That's the difference between...
Because I calculated that that would be roughly 200 in my head, 213,000 or so for the whole department, and maybe I'm way off, but I'm just curious, what, what that...
That's the difference between 3% and 1%.
3% and 1%.
Anything else? Yes?
I, I guess I look at this, I totally agree with what Ms. Patterson said about making sure that our, that our city is taken care of. I don't have a problem in theory with making sure that things are done, that money is raised correctly to keep our city functioning. But I, I have to agree with Mr. Ross that just blanket 3% across the board for everybody from here into eternity is irresponsible. My husband, a retired teacher in Plan A with the state of Vermont, is gonna earn a 1.6% increase in his retirement. I work for a private finance company, and the only person in my company that's guaranteed a 2.5% increase is the newest employee who happens to be sitting on the first level of her pay grade. And, and she's only getting it because the pay scale is moving up. We are not guaranteed an increase. We are not guaranteed, I'm not guaranteed anything. I have to work really hard to earn something when it comes to my salary because my salary is completely based on my work ethic and what I'm doing. And so I agree that those things need to be looked at, but 3% across the board when, when most people are gonna earn maybe 1%, maybe 1.6, social security or cost of living increases this year, irresponsible.
Mr. Mayor? I think Becky can answer this better than I can. But I think if you look at the average increase of the union contract from year to year, it's 3% a year. And we said here, all department heads said here not too many years ago, told, or this council one before, if you negotiate a 1.5% increase of the union, that's what it will take. We don't think you'll be taking any less of what you give to somebody else. That's my whole feeling on that.
Just as the council...
That's, these people negotiate the contract.
All right. Any other discussion on the budget? Then all those... Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two ayes and two noes, I will vote aye.
Mr. Mayor, can I just get the council members on how each one voted, I didn't.
No. Dan's no.
Dan's a no.
I was a no.
I was a no.
And Mr. Mayor, and I know that I got to him this evening last week, but this was, I have it in my head straight. What is the exact sum on budget this year?
Right there.
Four million?
Well, no, I'm sorry, the percentile. The three-point-two cents. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Information, is this the, this number, all these numbers are up on the website? It's just the same thing. Thank you.
That's why they're careful not to change it, because it updates the website in real time. That's why they're careful not to make a boo-boo and mess up the formula.
Just wanted to make sure when I look at it tomorrow, it's the same what we're looking at now.
Yeah. Okay, the next one is authorize city attorney to conduct the next tax sale.
How timely. So it's, it is that time of year again. Our charter says that we should hold two tax sales a year. Our city attorney has recommended that we hold one tax sale a year. We historically start the process in the fall. We've been moving that process back deliberately because the tax sale usually landed right around the holidays. We didn't want to do that for people, so we held off for a couple of months. And if we can start the process during the month of January, it's likely that we'll have a tax sale perhaps in April or May, which would be good timing. So if, if the council wishes to proceed on that, I need an official motion that authorizes our city attorney to conduct the tax sale.
I'm not sure I understand. Did you say the city charter says that we need two tax sales a year and we've only had one this year?
We, we've had one historically for the past four years, and it works much better because it takes people time to catch up.
So we've not been in, in compliance with our charter?
Not with your charter, but you have been in compliance with your city attorney's advice, so.
Okay.
And just a clarification, tax sale is just the worst-case scenario for like people who just don't respond to letters or you have an agreement and they just decide after part of the agreement, just don't communicate anymore. So it's really a last resort to go to tax sale.
You have to work very hard to get to the tax sale point. We usually start out with a couple of dozen properties on tax sale, and by the time we're at the actual date, people are given a lot of opportunities. And by the time we're at the actual date, we generally have a number of dozen people who go to tax sale.
And I don't know if it's true, I've been told that even those that go to tax sales, a good number of those people recover their property before the year is up.
Yes.
Any yardage reductions?
Yep. So we would need a motion.
So we would authorize the city attorney to conduct the next tax sale?
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All those in discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is presentation of city plan by Bob Currier, Chair of the Planning Commission. This is the formal process, exactly like what we did with the five-year capital plan. He, tonight, he presents it to us. We don't really get into a detailed discussion or anything.
I'll just, I'll explain it a little.
Yeah, yeah.
On November fifth, we gave you a plan. This is an updated plan, edited, there's no difference in the content. But he printed it, it's like five pages shorter, so there's, because there are five blank pages. So the numbers are going to be different in this than the other ones. About two years ago, we started working on the municipal plan. And we were, we were working on it to get it, so it's not going to be ready. And then we were asked to do some work on bylaws. So it, for about a year, we were, we were changed. So the last nine months to twelve months, we've been working on editing this plan so that we will always have a plan in, in force, so that we don't lose funding and grants. We had our open public meeting and the, we approved the edits that we did. The majority of the edits in this were chronological, were removing anything to do with the EB5 situation, and also editing all the authenticities. So that, that was the major work that we've done so far. With that in mind, we're presenting it to you because you have to present it to open public meetings so that we can get it passed by the second of March. And we have the timeframe to do it, because, because I think the city manager has the, the scheduled plan to do that. In the meantime, we were, we applied for, in October, we applied for a grant to develop a new municipal plan, an eight-year plan. And we were awarded the money to do it. So starting tomorrow, we're going to be working on a request for proposals and, and put it out to bid so that we can get some professional help to do a very good quality job to add a new municipal plan. So we're going to present this, this is going to be adequate for the present, but with the intent on really doing a, a good job in the next eight years.
The new plan, when it's, is we could do it for eight years.
Eight years.
Eight years versus five years.
Right, and we have sixteen months to do it. So we have to begin now and next April to finish the plan.
So I just make sure I, I understand. So our current plan expires, this will get us still the gap until we can get the new plan done with the professional help.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep, exactly. So, any other questions?
Nope, there's no motion or anything. We just accept it as the, as the process begins now.
Exactly.
At the, what meeting date? Want to go over the date of the public hearings?
Sure, so the clock starts ticking now, and you need a minimum of thirty days, according to statute, before you can have your first public hearing. So your first public hearing is going to be Monday, February tenth. And then you need a minimum of fifteen days and more if you make any changes. So if you do make any changes, please let us know, because that will change all of our dates. So as of right now, your second public hearing will be Monday, March second. And that, that will also be the date that you vote to accept it. And then it has the other process, it has to go through with the Regional Planning Commission for acceptance. But that timeline will keep us right on target.
Right, because we have to approve it, and then NVDA has to do their, their magic and go through and approve it also.
Yep.
Okay?
Good.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the planning commission appointee and vote. We had one applicant, Dan Pickering. The planning commission has recommended that we appoint Dan Pickering to the vacant position on the planning commission.
How long do you want to talk about, tomorrow? He'll on three years term?
That'll, he's, he's going to fill whatever term that was that, Colleen, Colleen's term.
I can look it up, I got the annual report from last year.
Read it.
Yeah.
What, a three-year term?
Yes.
But they're, they're not, they're just.
The staff's right. So she was elected last town meeting, so there'd be two more years after that.
I think mine expires this year.
Hers expired, actually, it said hers was expiring in twenty-twenty. But then, no, but she was reappointed.
She was appointed, not elected, that's right.
She was appointed, and according to this, it was expiring this March. So we appointing.
We're going to appoint her tonight, or him, morning again, and tell him.
Okay.
So it was Dan's term initially, but Dan, the other Dan's not filling.
Yes, it's your turn. Yes.
It was a big loss, wasn't it?
I refused to.
Clean the fifth, Bob? All right, so we have a motion to approve Dan Pickering to the planning commission.
Don't move.
Motion made, is there a second? Seconded, discussion? Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Okay. The next item is the recreation committee appointee and vote. We had a memo from the rec, from Jen Smith, the Chair of the Rec Committee, Jen, Jessica Booth. And Marin Garadine had stepped down due to time commitment, and they have recommended Lori Wells, who had stepped forward and is interested in filling the position. She's a Newport City resident, and so they recommended Lori Wells be appointed to the Rec Committee.
I would appoint Lori Wells to the Rec Committee?
Motion made, is there a second?
Yep. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, there's a second.
Thank you.
Okay. No, no, discussion? Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
I'm on my knees.
No, it's okay. I remember your plan, I just, it took me for a little bit. Okay. The next item is Bayview Street and Summer Street parking ordinance. This originally came about for Bayview Street, but then there was discussion about Summer Street and some of the issues with public safety, vehicles being able to pass through Summer Street. So I think we'll start with Bayview Street first.
Can I guess that Lynette Johnson? Hi Lynette. Lynette and I have been speaking about challenges that they've had on Bayview Street for a couple of months. She first alerted me back in October that her service vehicles are not able to get through Bay Street.
Do you want to come up and sit down? Come right up. You want to sit right in this chair here? That way.
So Lynette lives, let's just give you some perspective. This is our mapping program. Lynette lives in the next to the last house. That's it, okay. On Bayview Street, you have three utility poles that stick out into the road. When cars are parked directly in front of those utility poles, no vehicles that are large can get through there. This is taken from Pat Austin's dump truck, for example. He simply can't go down and make his service calls. He would not be able to get a fire truck down there. He can't get a plow truck down there. And when Lynette called me to let me know the situation was happening, we had a department head meeting to talk about this on a, on a larger scale to see if there's anything that we could do about this. When we discussed it amongst the fire department, the police, and our public works department, we came up with a proposal that there's a lot of congestion on that street that makes accessing it for services challenging all year round. In the summertime, we're often requested to sweep the street. We're also requested, I think there's a drainage pipe down there.
There is.
We have trouble, yeah, we have trouble getting to that because we can't fit the cars down there. We've spoken to one of the primary landowners, Adam, and we thought maybe he would be able to help us by instructing his tenants not to park down there. And imagine my surprise when he concurred that it is a problem. He has no way to enforce it. Adam owns, I think, five buildings.
That one, the one across the street, the next two on that side?
Is it that one too?
Yep. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay.
He owns seven of the buildings when you first get down.
All right.
And can I just add that they park illegally on the wrong side of the street to coming? And I've had to take my son to the ER before and had words, they're like, oh, no, just wait a minute. And I'm like, no, I'm, I'm leaving now, I'm not waiting a minute, and I'll move you out of the way.
She's my daughter-in-law that helped.
It is an issue.
That's consistent with the conversation that we had with Lynette back in October. So we've made a proposal, as drastic as it is, to close off parking on Bayview Street to allow that access. And again, as Lynette so succinctly stated to me on the phone, if she has a problem and she, we can't get emergency services down there, she's going to sue us.
Yeah, well, if, you know, somebody desires a disease that spreads because the garbage isn't collected, or a house burns down and the ambulance can't get an timely medical, something happened to my husband. You know, it's a matter of do we wait till something really tragic happens before we do something about it?
Right.
There, there's been times that there's been people just parked in front of the taller building even, and you can't get down, you can't get up, you can actually go knocking on doors, you can't get through.
There used to be, just before the back, the back of the municipal building, a little where you could actually get through there, because it's a dead end, there's no outlet now, and that outlet was blocked. So when there's an emergency, you could kind of go around by rocking chair, get in there another way than down Main Street. And it's, that got blocked.
It was too far up the road, mom?
Right, well, yeah, but if ambulance people had to get through and get access to somebody at the lower end, they could.
They could somehow get through one of these areas?
Yeah. But that, that got blocked off, so we don't have. You can't drive out that way to the, into the municipal parking lot.
Okay. So again, when we reviewed it internally, we thought the simplest way to do this would be to update our parking ordinance. And that's how Bayview Street claimed to be.
Okay. I had, can I make some comments? Okay, I'll try to. So Bayview Street is probably worse than Summer Street, because in an emergency, there are two ends to Summer Street, even though, even though it's one way. In an emergency, you could go up the wrong way to the other end and, and get through, you can't do that in Bayview. The only alternate was blocked years ago. So I'm really concerned about it. It involves trash collection. I've seen skunks, it's been a couple of, a couple of weeks since the garbage man's been able to make it through. They're part of the rats and disease germs. So there's that health hazard. If an ambulance can't fit through, or God forbid, there's a fire, they just, they just can't. And that's illegal exposure to the city. I'm not, if something horrible happens. A lot of cities face a situation once, only after something awful happens, before it's addressed, to a known problem, and it may be deadly that. I think there are a couple of things that wouldn't solve the problem entirely, but could make it not quite so bad. One of them is you could make each parking space opposite of those posts a non-parking spot, rather than not allow parking at all on the street. You could extend the overnight hours when alternate, alternate side of the street parking could even be made year-round. The parking lots out back, maybe extend, maybe through seven o'clock at night until six o'clock in the morning or something like that, the overnight hours, if you're not supposed to be on the street, and do it in summer as well. It's a matter of cleaning or a regular schedule when nobody's parking, maybe like every Thursday night or something. So there's a solution there. Or if you block off parking on the whole street, it's, it's a hardship to someone like me. I'm wealthy, I can, I'm eighty-two years old, and to bring my park, my groceries and everything up to the parking lots, I simply physically can't do it. There are also problems for delivery of mail, packages, that kind of thing. That kind of service people that want to service people, they would have to come all the way from the outback.
No, they could temporarily.
Right, temporarily.
Yeah, no, that wouldn't stop, mine is saying that wouldn't stop mailed a little bit, because, because they would just pull up in front of the building.
But the other thing that you could do too, is you could have an ordinance stating the maximum distance from the curb that you could have your vehicle parked. And there are cities that actually have lines painted on the street to demarcate the parking spaces. And if you've got something that's too big for the space, well, you can't be legal in that, in that spot. And then for signs for the winter, we tell, we inform the city when the winter parking regulations go through. So you could say, it means what it says, you can't park more than X feet away from the curb. And if you do, you're in violation, you get a ticket, and a ticker or two, and people, people learn. So I was thinking that that might be less drastic, but it'd be solved part of the problem. And that's kind of where I'm, where I'm getting with the concern of the legal exposure, the personal exposure to the hazards involved, health and safety for people who live on this street. personal exposure to the hazards involved, health and safety for people who live on this street. The cities need to do services, you could extend overnight parking, so there would be, I noticed that snow plows go pretty early in the morning and laid into it, and kind of a way, there, there are times that this sidewalk plow can get through, so that maybe, so I'm suggesting, you've got a good idea to do something about it, but maybe what you're proposing is a little bit of overkill, that there might be something like the two things I suggested. Marked parking spaces with a max, maximum that you can be away from the curb with your vehicle without being in violation.
Okay. Yeah.
I was wondering if you could hear from Tom and Seth and Jamie, they're the, they're the ones that have to get down the street if there's an emergency.
Right, I know.
I have no problem, Mark, line striping and putting up signs, but in the wintertime, you're not going to see the painted marks in the road, and a lot of times people don't read the signs. Yeah, it would be an enforcement issue, but it'll be unfortunate that it would be during that time of an emergency when they are parked there and they shouldn't be, and we're not going to be able to get in there. But, so, you know, it's, it's, either have it, have it perfect, not have car practice, so we can plow the road, emergency services can come down, they can pick your trash up, or you're, you're going to have times where people are going to park there anyways, and then there will be an emergency and you're going to be blocked in.
As I said, I did threaten someone before, I was going to move them with my larger SUV. And I did cut across an entire lawn and cut out to remake it. So, and then it was an issue. And if my child did die, I would sue-
So basically, if I'm with Tom, I mean, you can mark it like you want, but, you know, listen, especially in the wintertime, we didn't have any cars, you know, especially because there's no outlet, you know, not going, we don't have a lot of calls down there. But the calls we've had, I think the last fire we had down there was at the last round of apartment building. And we had all we could do, we had everybody get out to passenger side, because they couldn't open the driver's side and stuff, because there was a, the vehicle fire outside against the building. And we stretched our hoses from the side of the truck. So luckily, it's early detection, so we get the early call quickly, but it is definitely, I'm getting one truck down there with very minimal space, and, you know, so, then it's getting the truck back out. So we're actually stretching five-inch hose from Main Street all the way down the street, so that limits me to one truck down there, and so-
They're opening up that old access that used to be there, alternate act, but that wouldn't help probably.
That wouldn't help me, because just the light through our trucks moved down with the term.
Yeah.
Now, it's narrow during the summer months down there too.
What happens in the summer-
It's not just winter, it's summer.
Right. What happens during the summer is they'll park on the side of the sidewalk, then they'll park in front of the apartment buildings, and then you go from like this space to this space, and we've-
In fact, we're friends and family visiting as well, too, compared to that.
We've, we've fed mirrors in before. Luckily, they didn't break, but I mean, it's, it's happened, but our thing is life safety.
Right, yeah, that's-
You know, and if we take a mirror, we take a mirror.
Yeah.
We'll do that after the fact, but I'd like to see no parking on, on the street.
I know.
That's better than what we have, you know, I-
It, it sounds like, and-
A lot were on your side.
It sounds also, the majority of the landlord supports the idea of the no parking, from his conversation with the manager, you know, and-
I do too, as many times as my driveway's been blocked.
You know, and so that's what, that's what he said, and he owns, what, seven properties down there, the first seven.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you so much for bringing up the alternate, alternate solutions. I love to hear that, because I was thinking, as I read my packet for this evening's meeting, that I wonder if the people on Bayview Street were notified or asked for suggestions, how can we as a council say one day, no more parking? And we didn't even ask you what, what other solutions there might be. So I, I would strongly recommend that we hold off on this, have a neighborhood meeting, and the people who are there every day are the ones who are going to come up with the best solutions.
But don't, but don't drop it, don't wait till somebody does.
Can I, can I back to differ with the council?
Yes, you may.
President, this is a public safety issue. You've clearly stated, the job of the council is to enact ordinances that, for public safety, that's our job, and it's the same process as anything. And you raised a concern, we're taking it serious. The city manager contacted the owner of the majority of the buildings down there, who had no issue, because he knows that he can't enforce parking down there.
No.
You know, and he's how, he knows there's an issue, he even said there's an issue. And we have our fire chief saying that, you know, it could be a fire safety issue, you've already stated that the trash trucks can't get down there, you know, it's a public safety issue in my mind.
It is.
And, I mean, we could delay six months, a year if we want, but it doesn't solve your issue of getting the trash trucks down there, it doesn't solve in case there's a fire, it doesn't solve if the road's blocked and the ambulance has to get down there, say, whatever. And so that's just the way I'm coming at this, as a public safety issue. And our job is to ensure that there's public safety, that's our job.
You've convinced me, I'm willing to do a, so personally, a good beginning of my own, and yes.
I have watched an ambulance have to walk past three homes just to make, get the person in the ambulance, because they couldn't get far enough down the street. And you could have been sued then, and that was a couple of years ago. It is an issue.
Now, you have another resident of Bayview Street?
Yes.
Jennifer?
I live at the very end on the Westerly side, so Lynette is across from me. The one thing I'll say is, probably nobody remembers, but I've resided there for more than 40 years, there was parking on the east side and the west side for a number of years, and that was definitely a problem. My suggestion would be we consider moving the parking from the Esterly side to the Westerly side, because we're still going to have people who are going to be there. It's going to be a problem for some of those apartment dwellers who do not have a place to put their cars. Like Lynette, I have a place for my car, I can at least have one visitor without worrying about it. I have to admit, I have complained about the snow plow not plowing the complete turnaround, which is partially in front of my place. They have done that every year. I've never really, except one year when we got four feet of snow, had a real problem of the plow not going down there. The sidewalk plow is there. And I'll just say that today, twice I had to walk around the car that was parked on the sidewalk to get up so I could make Main Street. So right now, in the winter, I will say that a lot of the cars do not, they park on the sidewalk because the sidewalk's the same height as the street, at least down in our neck of the woods.
It would make sense if you wanted to still have parking there, that's a good idea to make another side, because there is no sidewalk from the poles.
It's not going to be the most convenient because of the- But I think that totally eliminating it, you know, years ago, we eliminated the sidewalk on that side, and that was Larry Fournier, who owned almost the same, I think he owned five of the buildings, as opposed to all of the ones that he owns now. But I think it's something to consider as opposed to this total elimination, because I've lived there for 40 years, and I think Lynette has lived there for, we call it length of time. We have not had this problem for 15 years, it is a matter of reeducation, and perhaps not, you know, not elimination.
It's timed, I think, when the new concrete sidewalk went in, it's wider than the original little asphalt path that used to be there.
Yeah. And it, and it does, it's, it's a little bit higher, so people are parking out from it, but it is a problem when people park on the east and the west side. And I have had to wait too. You know, it's not been too terribly inconvenient. I ended up kissing both mirrors going through just the other day because of the zigzagging between two, blew it up at the very top of the pavement.
If you had the parking on the, on the other side, then the poles would be a problem, because a pole is there and a car can't be in the same spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, right now, there's, from the sidewalk plow down at the bottom, I notice, like,
I can't even pull up in front of the street, I mean, in front of the house, like, thank God she has a, a driveway.
You can right now, but there's no curbing, there's no built-up snow.
You have to park even further in the road, because of the snow bank between the sidewalk and road.
It would be a matter of asking Tom if, when they go down, that potentially the sidewalk plow not be there. It's not helpful to me, and to be honest, besides Eleanor, who is not there most of the time, it is you guys and me who have to deal with the sidewalk. And the sidewalk is dealt with by a tenant further up, down to the house, right before Lynette's, before Lynette's driveway.
Could, could, would it be possible for these suggestions to, like, to go back, I know that, I know this department has its staff spent a lot of time examining this, but would it be possible just to take it up at staff meeting again, with the suggestions that have been made, and if anybody else has any suggestions, to send them in before next week?
Sure.
And you can just take a look at it again, with the suggestions that have come in, and see what the result of that is?
I like her suggestion of parking, allowed parking, but on the opposite side, not sidewalk side, but the other side.
That's where our problem comes from, not from the people legitimately are parked on the allowed east side. And there's nothing that says no parking on the west side. You know, let's, let's get up some no parking signs, because there is nothing. We have new tenants in the building right next to me, and they're parked right there, and we also have the garbage dumpster on the side of the street.
In touch with the other drop inlet that is now for November, which is why we've got six inches of-
So we'll, we'll send this one, Bayview, back to the staff to reevaluate the ideas.
Okay.
You know, something does need to be done, I think Lynette and I would agree with that, but I think that we have to consider the people who are there.
Well, my biggest concern, Jennifer, was the public safety aspect, because instead of a fire truck couldn't get down, or an ambulance couldn't get down, it kind of raised a red flag.
Not, not a problem in the years I've been there, luckily, they haven't able to-
It's a newer problem.
Yeah, but it's, it's just, it's the last year practically.
See, I know, see, I know.
Thanks, Ms. Mayor, I just would like to remind Agrew to do that, we have identified instances that are potentially going to, you know, cause lawsuits, danger to properties and liability. So the faster we address that, the faster the town will be liable for damage to a property or-
Well, yeah, it's a test, it's a jury, it's a, it's a, it's a judgment if one happens.
So we'll have it go back, staff to evaluate Bayview Street.
Good. Only again.
And then the next came up, since the ordinance was being revisited, was Summer Street. And I think the issue on Summer Street is more in the winter months than the summer months. And so instead of banning parking year-round, make it for the winter, like we do on other streets in the city, because people, let me finish my thought process before I turn it right over you, because I want to hear. But originally, when they mentioned it, they said something about banning it completely all parking, and then I got to looking at the ordinance, and I noticed that we have a winter ordinance for Clark Street. Does the same thing, it's too, it's narrow, so they don't allow parking in the winter months from November to April. So I thought that would work on Summer Street, because I can tell you, sometimes even in the summertime, you have to go up on the sidewalk to get through, because I use that as a shortcut. I go through there all the time, and I know sometimes people, they're again parked far enough out. Luckily, I've got a truck now, so when I go over the sidewalk, it's not as big of a bump as when I had my little car. So it came about as the snow, and Jamie brought it up as the emergency vehicles again. So that was just some of the thought process. Originally, they wanted to have it completely, and I thought, a wintertime ordinance like we did on a couple of the streets.
Well, I'm, we have no problem, I talked to most of the residents, most of them have small children, so they couldn't come. I took a picture, and I don't know whose issue, they plow our street because it is narrow, I don't know what kind of plow they use, I know I've seen a regular pickup truck come down and plow our road. And I took a picture, and whoever wants to see it, the side of the road is here, away from the sidewalk. Half the time, my driveway grows three feet every winter. I know, because my plow guy complains about it. And what happens is it builds up on the road, so people will start parking further and further out in the road. And I have a pickup truck also. So I don't mind, our road ends up doing this, because even in the summer months, as if you use our road to do a shortcut, you get late summer, because there's a manhole here, and there's a manhole here, and it dips down and doesn't drain correctly. So in the wintertime, it's all ice in the middle. So this ice builds up, and they have to use a grader, I do believe, you guys come through at least once a winter, use a grader, to get the road back down, which, as in, on Bayview, ice builds up equal to the sidewalk. So people just keep driving, and what happens, as you can see here, we have, lose three feet of the road to snow that's not plowed. And occasionally, the snow plow will come through after they have nicely plowed our road, and we lose additional two feet on this side, so our road that's already narrow to begin with gets even more narrow. I have a driveway, but if anybody comes to visit me with this parking van, like my father, who cannot walk 10 feet without getting winded, which I don't know where he's going to park, and I'm not carrying him to my house, you know, this is going to mess that all up. And a lot of the residents in the area, we have a lady that lives across the street who's going through chemo, you know, and she's going to need services, yes, but we do have a couple of vehicles that are extremely large that do park on our road that shouldn't be parking there. I have no dis, issue with that. But for emergency services, we have fuel trucks that go down our road, no issue. They do drive up on the sidewalk, but it's the same height as our road, so you can't really tell where's what. We have, we've had, I don't think we've had, have we had a fire or anything this winter or anything even remotely close?
Don't joke, sir.
I'm just saying. I have not said the Q word. But I, and I understand the emergency services, I was on the ambulance for 17 years, so I know about having access. So I'm not saying that, but not having any parking whatsoever in our road is going to be detrimental for the people who live on the, our street.
That's true, because I, I would drop my mom off and then go back and just walk down, you know?
I personally have my own medical issues, so I need to get out myself. And if I can't get out, I've lived there for 11 years, if there was an issue with me not getting out, not being able to get to the hospital in a matter of minutes, I can die myself, so if there was a problem, I'd be the first one complaining about it. I have not, in 11 years, had an issue of getting out of my driveway. Mind you, at times, it's like a logging road, but I have always been able to get out of my road. So I think if it was plowed closer to the actual side, I don't think there would be an issue, if it was actually wide enough the way it was supposed to be. And, and if there's people that park during the times that are not supposed to, tell them, because all the residents that I talked to, which was everybody but two people on that street, we all park off the street in each other's driveways in Doug Spates parking lot, knowing we're not supposed to be on the road. So if somebody's on the road, they're not supposed to be there. We have no issue with the city getting, pulling them so they can take care of our road. But during the day, I think it would be detrimental for our area.
Okay. I'm going to ask the subject matter experts. Tom, anything to add to that, or she things?
Can't get through, won't plow it? At night, we'll have to go, we go back at night and clean it up? I don't have an issue.
For the Summer Street, we've kind of almost been going the wrong way. You know, the hard part is when, you know, it does, like Jen said, they tend to move out because of the snow piles and stuff. We're limited on, we're, I can't move the tower over there in the wintertime, just because I can't set it up. I need 20 feet, I'm not going to get 20 feet. You know, so, again, it's the same thing, a winter parking van or something like that would work good for us as life safety, it's not a, one of those things where, we never have fair weather fires. If we're going to have a fire, it's going to be cracking out. Nature of the beast.
The only reason why I suggested the win on one was because the original was to do it permanently, you know, year-round, and I thought, well, because the issue's winter, like we have on some other streets, and like, right, I know I've lived in a community, not here, it was another one, where they actually had wintertime parking vans, because it was very narrow and they do that. But, but that was just always why I suggested it, because all of a sudden, it was included in, when Bayview came up, Summer Street came up, and that's why-
They could do a winter parking van, and then have the painted parking spaces in the summer, which are enforced, it'd be real clear.
You'd have to be really on top of it, though, because no matter what, they don't care, and they park on the west side of Bayview Street, and the emergency issues were in the summertime, they were not in the wintertime.
So I think what we'll do is we'll leave, leave this one also back to the department heads for their staff meeting to discuss the ideas and the recommendations for this, this, sound okay with the council? Just to have it go back to the department heads.
What would be the process for-
What would be the process for collecting feedback from the residents?
I think we'll meet with the department heads first and find out whether or not we're gonna pursue or make a recommendation to pursue. It doesn't sound like, if what Jen has represented, and she's spoken to everybody, that there's much interest. So we'll talk amongst ourselves first.
I think the more critical street is to Bayview. I think that's the critical street right now, is Bayview. And so I think we'll, we'll move on from this and let the department heads discuss it and look at Bayview. Pretty good. That one to me is the more critical issue on that aspect. Okay? That's the job. All right, and we'll move on. New business. Mr. Johnson? Any new business? New business, Laura? Okay, Mr. Johnson, old business.
Yeah, the department heads don't have the reports and the, oh, yeah, we need to get them in, exponnically.
Yeah? Forget them. Yeah.
Questions for articles are due on the sixteenth and candidates on the twentieth.
Anything else? Officers? Any officers? Okay, the next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, January twentieth. Here in the council. And now we need a motion to adjourn at eight oh six. Several, your motion made, seconded? All those who favor say aye, opposed, unaffirmative.